Good evening and welcome to the September 8th, 2014 Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting. I'd like to call this meeting into order. In accordance with the State Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on September 4th, 2014 to the Hillsborough Beacon and Courier-News. May I have a roll call, please? Mr. Mahmoud?
Shirley. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Here.
Ms. Santafonte? Mr. Datta? Mr. Gillette? Mrs. Haas? Mrs. Haley?
Here.
Mr. Pulserfer?
Here.
Ms. Wasson?
Here.
And Mr. Kinz?
Here.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum. I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session, but first let me read this. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset in the State of New Jersey as follows. A) The matter to be discussed is a student disciplinary matter related to harassment, intimidation, and bullying. B) The matters discussed in executive session will be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, we're going to executive session. We'll be back at 7:30. Thank you. Okay. Good evening and welcome to the September 8th, 2014 Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting. We're back from closed session. May I have a roll call, please? Mr. Mahmoud?
Shirley. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Here.
Ms. Santafonte? Mr. Datta? Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Here.
Mr. Pulserfer?
Here.
Ms. Wasson?
Here.
Mr. Kinz?
Here.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum. Let us rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome back to another school year. I can feel the energy. It's electric. So, we've got quite a few people to welcome into the district. I'll hand it off to Dr. Schiff for the superintendent's report. Real quick, correspondence is as you see in the agenda. Dr. Schiff?
Thank you, President Kinz. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce all of our new teachers who are here in the audience this evening. It's always great to have so many people of such high regard join a truly exceptional team of professional educators. But before we begin that process, we do have a new member to our dais who is here tonight, Mr. Matthew Bolden, and I would like to turn it over to Mr. Mahmoud who will introduce him.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. I'd like to introduce Mr. Matthew Bolden, who started his career about 20 years ago with KPMG. So he is a traditional bean counter like I am. He worked for Payne Weber for a few years, and his last 12 years, he was an auditor who's been reviewing both public and private municipalities as well. Matthew has his MBA from Rutgers. He has a CPA. He's a proud father of two wonderful kids, Jake and Lindsay. I think they're both here. And I think Matt is a significant other. Cloudy is here. Matt's first day of work here at the board was on August 25th. Matt walked in, he said good morning, I said good morning, and we introduced him to three auditors, and they slewed him with a bunch of requests, and he came back the next day. So we're very fortunate that Matt came back. His first week was a heck of a hard week, and we appreciate all the efforts and work you did. I truly can't thank him enough for that first week. In essence, Matt, you passed your first test, so welcome aboard as the Assistant Business Administration Board Secretary.
Congratulations.
I guess the second test is getting through tonight.
That's good. The way we'll proceed tonight is that each principal will have an opportunity to introduce members of their new staff. First tonight, our principal from Hillsborough High School, Ms. Karen Binger.
Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to introduce the new staff members from Hillsborough High School. I'm going to ask all of them to join me and line up here to my right, and then I will introduce each one individually. Come on up. This evening, I'm very pleased to welcome back Sue Caliminary, who is joining our French department again. That's Sue right there in the black. She's joining our French department again. She was a part-time teacher with us a number of years ago. She left for a full-time position at Manville Middle School and High School where she was also teaching French. She has her Bachelor of Arts in French and Secondary Education from Rutgers, and we are thrilled to have her back home as a Raider and teaching full-time French with us. Vincent Cucaro is joining our English department. Vin has his BA in Literature from West Chester University and his graduate certification program completion at Rider University. Prior to joining us, did a student teaching stint at William Annan Middle School in Bernard's Township. Welcome, Mr. Cucaro. Ashley Griffith is returning to us. She is an HHS alumnus, which makes us, or alumna, I should say, which makes us very proud to have her back. She has her Bachelor of Arts in English and Secondary Education from Westfield State University in Massachusetts. Prior to working with us, she was a Zone and Development Specialist at Stellar Academy, which is a daycare facility with a focus on primary education. Welcome, Ms. Griffith. Jackie Carlson Persico actually joined us the middle of last year. She is a school psychologist with our child study team. Prior to joining us, she was a school psychologist in Midland Park Schools. She has her Bachelor of Arts in Social and Behavioral Sciences and with a focus on psychology. Her master's in Psychological Studies with a concentration in school and community psychology, and her EDS in School Psychology, all from Seton Hall University. Michael Knapp is our newest hire just last week, as a matter of fact. He has his BA in English from TCNJ. He was working with us last year as a substitute teacher, and we are very happy to bring him on this year as a full-time English teacher. Lisa Oljuski has joined our library staff as one of our two librarians. She has her BS in Psychology and her BA in History from Purdue University. Her Master of Arts in Library and Information Sciences from Rutgers University. And before coming here, she was a program assistant for the Chair of Library and Information Science at Rutgers University. Kimberly O'Rear has joined our Health and Physical Education Department. We were fortunate enough to have Ms. O'Rear last year act as a long-term sub for us. She has come back in that position this year to help us with a different family leave, and she has her Bachelor of Arts in Health and Physical Education from Kane University. And Laura Zulo is here tonight, although not quite yet, at the high school. She is currently working as a special ed teacher with a focus in biology at Franklin High School. She will probably not be released to us until maybe early to mid-October. We're hoping, keeping our fingers crossed, for sometime sooner than that. And Laura has her Bachelor of Science in Environmental Science from Cook College at Rutgers, her special ed certification from the Graduate School of Rutgers. We also have quite a few other people who have joined us. I'm just going to name them. Unfortunately, they could not be here this evening, but they are truly an outstanding crew of people. Bonnie Corso is our District Database Manager. Marina Davino is a new math teacher. Jacqueline Farina is a long-term sub in English. Casey Fitzgerald is a history teacher. Natasha Gojan Lamar is a computer resource teacher. Melissa Griffin is a guidance counselor. Michelle Hill is a science teacher. Juliana Lobiondo, another HHS alum, is our new vocal music teacher. Kim Loesch is doing a long-term sub for Information and Communication Technology. Maria Padilla Davis is special ed English, and Elizabeth Shanack is special ed. And we really have an outstanding crew with us this year, and I'm so very pleased to have each and every one of these people onboard. So thank you for joining us and welcome. And it's now my honor to introduce Dr. Joseph Trabalski from Hillsborough Middle School.
If I could have the new staff from Hillsborough Middle School, please join me as the high school model for you. Thank you. Quite a new class, or quite a large class of new additions to Hillsborough Middle School this year. The first person I'd like to introduce is right here, Christian Alfaro. Christian joins us as our school psychologist at the middle school and our child study team. He has his bachelor's degree in Criminal Justice from Fairleigh Dickinson University and his master's degree in School Psychology, also from Fairleigh Dickinson. He did his internship last year at the Park Ridge School District, and we're pleased to have Christian aboard as our school psychologist. Christine Altamari. Christine joins us as a 7th grade science teacher. She has her Bachelor's of Science in Environmental Science from Penn State University. She did graduate work in environmental science at Rutgers University and has her graduate certification through Rider University in teaching. She worked for the New Jersey Department of Ed for, excuse me, the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, that's twice I've done that, for about five years, and also with the Stony Brook Millstone Watershed Association for a number of years, and most recently taught science with the American Boy Choir School in Princeton. And they are singing a sad song tonight because we are glad to welcome Christine Altamari to Hillsborough Schools. Melissa Dreher. Melissa joins us as a special ed math teacher in grade 7. She has her bachelor's degree in Mathematics and Education from Monmouth University and did her teacher certification work in special ed through Kane University. She taught for the last three years in some long-term leave replacement positions with the Bridgewater and Warren Township School District. Really pleased to have her aboard permanently here in Hillsborough. Paulina Espinoza. Paulina? Paulina joins us as a Spanish teacher. She has her bachelor's degree in Spanish Education from Kane University. She's a native though of Ecuador and actually came to Hillsborough with her family in her teen years, spent some time in Hillsborough, and now is returning to Hillsborough as a teacher of Spanish. She did her internship in Plainfield School District last year. Heather Gerlitz Burns. Heather joins us as a special ed math teacher for grade 8. She has her degree from Arcadia University and did her teacher certification work through Setonary College. She worked for about 20 years in business, quite successfully, and now brings all of that experience, plus a few years as long-term leave replacement in Clinton Township and Branchburg, to Hillsborough Public Schools as a math teacher for special ed with us. Lisa Harwell. Lisa joins us as a science teacher for grade 8. She's a graduate of Virginia Tech and also has her master's in Geosciences from Mississippi State University. She worked for about 11 years as a middle-level math and science teacher, most recently with Warren Township Schools, although her family moved to Germany for several years, quite recently. She volunteered at the International School of Dusseldorf while living in Germany and has since returned to central New Jersey and joins us as an 8th grade science teacher. Patrick Heck. Patrick joins us as an 8th grade literacy teacher, and he's a familiar face to Hillsborough, middle school, that is. He did his internship in Hillsborough Middle School last fall with the very same team that he is now working for as a permanent English teacher, graduate of the College of New Jersey with his bachelor's degree in English and Secondary Education. Helen Liu. Hi, Helen. Helen is a graduate of Taoyuan University of Technology in China and a master's degree from Shangji University of Finance and Economics, also from China. If you haven't guessed, she's our teacher of Chinese for the middle school. She has her master's degree also in teaching Chinese and Asian Studies through Rutgers University and has taught for about three years in the public school system, teaching Chinese, and we're thrilled to have her with our fledgling Chinese program as it begins at the middle school this year. Gabrielle Fitzner. Gabrielle joins us as a special ed Resource Center Support teacher. She has her bachelor's degree in Education and Biology from Kane University and her master's degree in Special Education, also from Kane. She has about 10 years of teaching experience at the elementary and special ed level, working with the Newark and Plainfield Public Schools before coming to Hillsborough. And I don't think, these last two folks are not able to be here this evening, I don't believe, anyway. Danielle Sarnowski. Danielle is joining us as a part-time art teacher. She's a graduate of TCNJ and taught last year in Bound Brook for one year. And Pale Abanano also couldn't join us this evening. She's teaching Italian for the middle school. She's a native Italian speaker and her master's degree from University of Palermo, where she studied English, French, and Italian literature, and as I said, a native Italian speaker, and we're really pleased to have her join us as well. I believe that I didn't miss anybody. Yeah. Welcome aboard to everybody to the middle school and to all the new teachers throughout the district. Thank you very much. That's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Chris Carey from Autton Road Intermediate School.
Thank you, Dr. Trabalski. Good evening, everyone. As the Autton Road staff is making their way up, I just wanted to, again, congratulate all the new teachers and staff in the district. It's good to see the smiles are still on your faces after the first few days. So we have six individuals at Autton Road. I am so proud to introduce to you the Board of Education. They're a fantastic group, so we'll go alphabetically. We first have Sarah Bryan Ashwell. Sarah is an alum of Hillsborough District, Hillsborough Public Schools, so happy to have her here with us, coming back home. Sarah has her bachelor's degree in Liberal Arts Studies and Natural Sciences from Rider University. She's in the process of pursuing her graduate degree in the Teacher Education Program from Rider. And again, as I mentioned, she was a, coming back home, she was a substitute in Hillsborough Public Schools this past year, and she also just recently completed her student teaching at Princeton Community Park Elementary School, and she'll be with us as a grade 5 Science and Math teacher. Next, we have Jack Casey. There's Jack. Jack has a bachelor's degree in Health and Exercise Science from the College of New Jersey. He most recently finished his, a job as a health and PE teacher in the Windsor and Shepherd Alternative School of North Jersey. He also, very interestingly, he completed student teaching about two years ago at the American International School in Johannesburg, South Africa. And for any of you who are fans of Ultimate Frisbee, Jack is a member of the semi-professional Philadelphia Spinners Ultimate Frisbee Team, and Jack, of course, will be with us as a health and PE teacher. Welcome, Jack. Next, we have Tyler Hobbs. There's Tyler. Tyler, welcome. And Tyler has a bachelor's degree in Elementary Ed and Psychology from Rider University. He has served four years in the United States Military, or United States Marine Corps, and I'd like to thank Tyler for his service. Please join me with that. Applause for Tyler. Recently, last year, Tyler finished his student teaching in Johnson Park Elementary School in Princeton, and Tyler will be with us as a grade 6 Science and Social Studies teacher. Next, we have Elizabeth Hughes, right here on the end. Welcome, Elizabeth. Elizabeth has a bachelor's degree, actually two bachelor's degrees, one in English and one in Special Education, as well as a master's degree in Special Education from the College of New Jersey. She most recently finished her student teaching at the West Amwell School in West Amwell, and she will be with us as a Special Education Replacement Literacy and Wilson teacher. So welcome, Elizabeth. Jonathan Kaplan. Jonathan Kaplan has a bachelor's degree from Kane University in Mathematical Sciences. His most recent position, he was with Marlborough Middle School as a 7th grade math teacher, and we're certainly happy to have Jonathan here with us, teaching grade 6 math this year. And last but not least, we have Molly Moulton. Molly has a bachelor's degree in Math, Science, and Technology from the College of New Jersey. She also has a master's degree from College of New Jersey in Special Education. She is a TCNJ Merit Scholar, I want to make sure I throw that in. Most recently, she finished her student teaching also at the American International School at Johannesburg, South Africa. Molly will be with us this year as a Special Education Replacement Math teacher. And I would also just like to mention that one individual who cannot be, thank you, Molly. One other individual who cannot be here is Cindy Anne Kento. She is a long-term sub for the Teacher of the Deaf. She'll be with us through February, so I want to welcome Cindy Anne as well. You guys doing okay? Welcome, all of you, again. So glad you guys came out tonight. This is a big step to introduce everyone. Thank you so much, Autton Road staff. And now I'd like to pass the microphone off to Dr. Mary Malady, Principal of Amsterdam Elementary School.
It's with pride and excitement that I introduce the newest members of our Amsterdam team. I'd like to introduce Emily Campisano. Emily comes to us from the College of New Jersey where she was on the dean's list several years, several times. She comes to us from New South Brunswick Schools where she was a kindergarten teacher, and this year she'll be a long-term sub in 1st grade. Welcome, Emily. I'd also like to, next, I'd like to introduce Emily Shabazian, who comes for us from Quinnipiac University in Connecticut. And there she received her Master's of Art in Teaching Elementary Education, a Bachelor's of Arts in Psychology. She was also on the dean's list multiple times. This year she'll be teaching 4th grade at Amsterdam School. Welcome, Emily. And our last member of the Amsterdam team is Elizabeth Shapiro. Elizabeth comes to us from Rider University where she received her Bachelor's of Arts in Elementary Education and Psychology, and her minor in Early Childhood Education. Emily, Elizabeth was also on the dean's list several times, and we'd like to welcome her to Amsterdam Schools, a 3rd grade teacher. I'd like to introduce Mr. Mike Folpe, Principal of Hillsborough Elementary School.
Okay, I'd like the entire new HES staff to please come up to the podium. I do have several new teachers to introduce this evening, however, only one was able to make it tonight. Kim DeFranco is my kindergarten, 1st, and 2nd grade Language Learning and Behavior Disabilities teacher. As I've said before, if you've got a kid with a problem, she goes to Ms. DeFranco's room and she fixes them. Mrs. DeFranco got her credentials and her bachelor's degree, as well as her master's degree, from Rutgers University, so we're very happy to have her onboard. A few other staff members who are not here, I would like to just introduce are, well, I'd like to talk about them, not introduce them. Kelly Rakovic is an LDTC split between Hillsborough Elementary School and Woodburn. I have two kindergarten teachers, Lisa Letts and Diana Visacaro. John Schindel is a physical education teacher who joined us partway through last year, didn't have a chance to be introduced. And Dawn Krompassky is a 4th grade teacher for me at Hillsborough Elementary School. Welcome, all the new teachers, and please welcome the new staff of Hillsborough Elementary School. At this time, I'd like to welcome Dr. Tammy Jenkins, Principal of Sunnymead.
Good evening, everyone. Like HES, our new staff members are tiny but mighty. Don't go all the way over there, there's nobody else to line up, honey. You're it. It is with great pleasure that I introduce Rebecca Cordisco. Rebecca is a shared counselor between Sunnymead and Triangle Schools. Rebecca joins our staff following a year at the CARES program in Trenton, New Jersey. She completed her MS in School Counseling from Gwinnett Mercy College in Pennsylvania, and she has a BS in Human Services from the University of Delaware, and we're very excited to welcome Rebecca to our Sunnymead and Hillsborough family. Welcome, welcome, welcome. And it's my pleasure to introduce my friend and colleague, Mrs. Lisa Heisel, Principal of Triangle School.
You could have stayed with us. Rebecca, obviously, has been introduced to you. She is our shared counselor and is so far doing a fabulous job for us. I'd also like to welcome, this is the first time I've ever had new teachers to welcome in my seven years as Principal of Triangle Schools, so this is an exciting moment for me. First up, Samantha Hillier. Sam joins our staff as an ASI teacher. She has a master's degree in Special Education from Waynesburg University in Pennsylvania, a master's in Reading Education from the University of Central Florida, as well as a bachelor's degree in Elementary Education from the University of Central Florida. Sam was a long-term substitute for us last year, and we're all real happy to have her come back full-time. So welcome. Maria Iovino. Maria has been on the staff of Triangle School for a year and a half as an instructional assistant in our preschool disabled class, but this year moves to become the Title I Extended Day Kindergarten Teacher, and she will be with us for this year and hopefully continuing on. She has a master's degree from Kane University and a bachelor's from Rutgers, so welcome. And finally, Samantha Pavon. Sam is another Hillsborough graduate. She is returning to the school district as a 3rd grade teacher at Triangle School. She's a graduate of Rutgers University with a bachelor's degree in English and a master's degree in Elementary Education, and we're very excited to be her first school ever. So welcome to everybody else. Welcome to you, girls. Thank you very much. I will introduce, I'll introduce Steve Kerrigan, Principal of Woodburn School.
Good evening, everyone. If we could have, yes, lots of people. I'm very, very pleased and proud to welcome Kim DeMayo. Kim DeMayo comes to us as a long-term sub in one of our self-contained special education classes. Kim holds a bachelor's from Rutgers and her master's from Georgian Court and has extensive experience with special education students at multiple levels. Welcome. We have Amber Gray. Amber's our brand-new grade 2 classroom teacher. She comes to us with experience working with students in grades 1, 2, and 5, has a bachelor's from Marymount Manhattan College and a master's from Cuny Hunter College, I'm sorry about that. And we have Faith Springsteen. Faith will be our Title I Intervention Kindergarten Teacher this year. In fact, she served in that role last year as well, so she's new, but not very new. But she's new to this meeting, so this is fun, right? This is good. Faith comes to us with a bachelor's degree from Kane University with a concentration in Special Education, and we're very, very excited to have her back with us. To all of you, welcome. To all of the new teachers, welcome. And I'd like to now turn it over to Mrs. Jody Howe, Principal of Woods Road.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome my new staff. We only have one that couldn't make it, but he hasn't really started yet. Okay, at this time, I'd like to introduce Janine Kazimbo. Mrs. Kazimbo teaches 1st grade, and she's not new to Hillsborough, or of course Woods Road School. Mrs. Kazimbo completed her student teaching back in the early 90s at Woods Road, and then she taught 1st grade and 2nd grade at Woods Road, and then she jumped over the pond to London because her job, her husband got a job transfer, and then she decided to have children and raise her kids a little bit, came back across the pond, and decided to get back into teaching, started substituting, and then, of course, we are so excited to have her back teaching 1st grade here at Woods Road. So welcome, Mrs. Kazimbo. Next, we have Samantha Finnegan. She's teaching 2nd grade this year. She is going to be our long-term, full-year long-term replacement for 2nd grade. She's a graduate of Rutgers School of Environmental and Biological Sciences, where she received a BS in Nutritional Sciences and a minor in Youth Outreach and Development. And she's also a graduate of Hillsborough High School, and she also has certification from the Center of Effective School Practices. And Ms. Finnegan also was a long-term sub last year at HES for grades 1 and 2, so welcome, Ms. Finnegan. Next, we have Mrs. Diane DeGeras, who will be a long-term sub for us in 4th grade this year through December. She has been at Woods Road since 2007 as an instructional aide for the preschool, kindergarten, and also in the elementary special education students. Prior to this, she taught 1st and 3rd grade for 10 years in the, Montague, thank you. We've been practicing that, and of course, I didn't get it right. Montague, New Jersey, which I found out is in Sussex County. Most recently, she completed her ESL certification in June, so welcome to the classroom, Diane. Welcome back to the classroom, Diane. And we have Lauren Bonick, who is going to teach grade 4. She is also a Hillsborough alum. Yay. She's not new to Woods Road. She was with me last year, or with us last year, as a long-term leave replacement in grade 4, and she is a graduate of Kane University with a Bachelor of Arts in Early Childhood and also holds a Bachelor of Arts in English, and welcome back. Next, we have Michelle Legaspi. She joins us on our 2nd grade team. She's not new also to Hillsborough. She previously taught at Triangle School in grades 3 and 4, and prior to that, she was out west in Arizona where she taught grades 1 and 2. And prior to that, she was in the Piscataway Township Schools for five years, so welcome to the Wildcat family. We're glad you're back in Hillsborough. Next, we have Mrs. Janine Riley. Mrs. Janine Riley joins our Special Education Team in our Literacy Lab. Mrs. Riley is not new to Woods Road. She's been with us for many years as an instructional aide in our preschool program, as well as an aide in our grades 2 and 4 classrooms. Prior to being an instructional aide, Mrs. Riley was a stay-at-home Prior to being an instructional aide, Mrs. Riley was a stay-at-home mom raising four children. She also worked in the classroom as a classroom teacher in Perthian Boy School for four years. So welcome to the classroom. And then Mr. Harvey Gross, um, who is not here, he will be our long-term leave replacement for our LDT, see, our learning disabilities, uh, teacher consultant. He brings a variety of experiences as a retired educator. He's, um, had completed leave positions in South Brunswick, Hamburg, Somerset County Technical High School and many other districts. So welcome. Thank you and enjoy.
I had the honor and pleasure of interviewing almost every single one of you who are sitting out in the audience tonight. And I can truly say without any hesitation, this is an extraordinary group of professionals who are going to do some wonderful things with the children of Hillsborough Township. Let's give them another big round of applause. I would also be remiss if I didn't recognize our outstanding principals that did a wonderful job tonight introducing all of their new staff members. Let's give our principals a big round of applause. And I'd, I'd like to ask the board at this time for unanimous consent to take a brief five-minute recess in order for you to have the opportunity to, um, greet and welcome our new teachers. We do have some cake that, uh, is available in your honor.
Yeah, we'll take a 10-minute break, actually.
10 minutes. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, just a couple of other quick announcements for the board as well as for the public. Uh, we had a wonderful opening of school. I've had the opportunity in the past few days to visit all nine schools and, uh, very uplifting to see teachers and kids doing great things together. Real positive feel as we opened up the, um, the, the district this year. Also, we have opened up additional class sections between, um, our August 1 date and currently the opening. We opened, as the board is aware, a second grade, uh, classroom at Woodfern. We also opened a kindergarten section at, uh, Sunnymead and a third grade section at Amsterdam School. Both the Woodfern and the Sunnymead, uh, positions are budgeted for. We do have one position that is not in the budget, that's the third grade over at Amsterdam School. So I'm asking the board to create the position, which is on the board agenda, um, tonight and move forward that way in order to maintain our, um, class size limits and not begin the school year, uh, with overloaded, um, classes. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Kins for the rest of the agenda.
And real quick, and since we were doing introductions, we have one other, our, our high school student representative, Cassie Pezzis, she actually is returning for a second year, so welcome back. Okay, continuing on with the agenda, we have approval of minutes. So I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the July 28th, 2014 special public meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Gotcha.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
Okay.
Got it.
Motion passes. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the July 28th, 2014 executive session minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
Motion passes. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the, that was for the 28th? Okay.
Uh, both?
Nobody, 18.
We're not, we're not, yeah.
She's voting ahead, she's quick. All right, August, uh, entertain a motion to approve the August 18th, 2014 executive session minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
Okay. Yes. Okay, and lastly, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the August 18th, 2014 public meeting minutes.
So moved.
One more second. Okay.
One second, Judy.
Judy.
Gotcha.
Any discussion? Mr. Pulsofer.
While it was an immense pleasure to have Mrs. Haas at our meeting, um, I was the one that gave the report about the Human Resources Committee meeting.
I already sent that in. And they spelled your name wrong several times.
Uh, yeah. As Rodney would say, I get no respect.
And then, um, if you could document when they were, uh, there was discussions about the, um, first readings.
Sure.
There was a couple, um, that had options and so I directed to, to have those options chosen for the second reading.
Well, we'll make the adjustment.
Which I have seen incorporated.
We'll make that adjustment.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And abstentions?
Abstained.
Okay. They all pass.
Gotcha.
Okay, um, committee reports, I believe there hasn't been any committee reports that are happening this week.
Can I comment?
Please do.
Um, we have a committee meeting this year on, uh, for the personnel committee on 9/11. And not only is it 9/11, but it's also conflicting with the high school back-to-school night.
Yep.
And I know that's a problem for at least one board member. Um, I would just hope, I know you can't change any of that now, but I would just hope in the future we avoid 9/11 because all of our first responders in town have morning and afternoon program, uh, morning and evening programs and people might want to go to that instead.
Yeah, that has already been rescheduled for Wednesday. Okay. Thank you.
No, we'll make the schedule.
Okay. I now open the floor to the public and this could be with regard to new business or items on the action agenda. Please state your name and address.
Good evening, Henry Goodehew, 16 Laurel Drive, from the Hillsborough Education Association. Um, I wanted to ask for clarification regarding the Board Policy 3283, which is the electronic communications policy, uh, for staff, but I believe that the same terms appear on the one for, uh, ESPs as well. In section four, uh, 4B and 4D are somewhat contradictory where it states that, uh, teaching staff members, uh, shall not accept friend requests from any student on personal social networking websites or other internet-based social media websites. But then in D, it states that staff members with permission of principals can use them for extracurricular activities, uh, so long as they're available to everybody. Um, I was hoping you could provide some clarification on that as well as how this policy would impact, uh, extracurricular activities, clubs, things of those natures that employ, uh, social media to communicate with the students.
Yeah, I think this is a very important policy because it codifies the expectations of the district and protects all staff members from, um, uh, miscommunicating through social media. So the, the issue of whether or not a principal should or could approve a particular change is, um, I think is a good safeguard to make sure that administrator is monitoring, um, or is at least in the loop on a question that may be, uh, that, um, uh, that when social media is used for, um, instructional purposes. What we haven't had in the past is clarity on where do you draw the line on the social media? Because not all social media exchanges certainly are inappropriate, but we want to ensure the safety of our children, protect our staff. This is a policy actually that's new. It, it is being, um, uh, published by Strauss Esme based upon some of the best practices that are out there. Principals should have the authority on a case-by-case basis to say, yeah, this is okay, or no, this is, this is not okay on particular issues. But, um, just to be specific, in terms of friending on personal, um, em, uh, on personal Facebook accounts, it's clear that there's a prohibition against it in the policy.
Sure. But my point is more that I understand the personal aspects of it and the protection that it provides to both students and staff, but where it follows up by saying, or other internet-based, uh, social media websites?
Yeah.
If it's not a personal one, but they're using that for extracurricular activities, um, section 4B is stating that they should not do that.
Well, but, but it's also saying that the principal can, can approve it if it's deemed to be appropriate.
Should that language be clarified though, that it needs to be under approval? Because it's 4B, it sounds like, and for many staff members, they've stated it sounds like it's saying, don't do it at all. But then D says you can do it under certain circumstances with approval.
Well, I think if there's a question about it from a staff member, they can approach their principal and see if, if, you know, I'm trying to think about a particular instance of, um, someone, you know, using their Twitter account to try to do a, you know, back and forth on, on a debate on a particular issue in a, in a class and have that published. Um, and it, it is probably a good idea to have your principals okay on, on these type of things, so, um, and I, I don't see it as, as something that is in conflict. I think if there's a question about it, the, um, staff member can go to their principal and they can make a determination. We're actually going to be, um, reviewing this as a policy case study in next week's, next week's leadership team meeting. So there may be something that's coming out of that, that particular meeting.
So here, here could be an example, so for example, it's high school cross-country team. They, they can create a Facebook group that the students can participate in. Again, this all has to be approved by the principal so that coaches, assistant coaches can communicate to the team members through that group as opposed to the specific coach having a personal friend or communication among the students.
So that would be acceptable, that they have a page that's open to everyone?
Yeah. As long as it's approved by the principal.
With, with the principal's approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Good question. Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none. Move on to the action agenda. Dr. Schiff.
Thank you, Mr. Kins. I ask for the board's consideration of following motions under the area of education to approve travel and related expenses, approve the policies and regulations as listed.
I'd like to entertain a motion to provide items A1 and A2 of the action agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? So, um, real quick, and this was one of the things that, that I questioned last, on the first reading, um, specifically in the suspension, there were a couple of options. I saw that the options were chosen. I guess the question I have is, was the education committee, they review those changes and make the recommendation for the second reading?
No, we didn't have a meeting in between, but the, but the education committee read through the policy, looked at the choices and requested administration's recommendations.
Okay. Okay, great, thanks.
Is my recollection, it was that?
Mrs. Haas.
I'm concerned about proceeding with any of these policies tonight because given the schedule of the summer, we haven't really had a chance to go back for the second reading and reexamine them at the committee level. I mean, if everybody's comfortable with them and there are no comments from the board members, um, you know, I, I guess it would be okay to move ahead, but at the same time for the policy that was mentioned by Mr. Goodehew, I think, you know, committee should have another stab at it and see whether or not there, there are issues that need to be firmed up. So it's up to think about.
Is there a desire to send them back to committee? Or are people, are people okay with them?
I thought we had a desire to stop.
Okay. All right, I mean, we read through them, so. Okay, we'll continue on. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call please, Mr. Mahmood.
Surely. Mrs. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Miss Centafonting? Mr. Datta is absent. Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Ms. Wassan?
Yes.
Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, continuing on with the action agenda.
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions that I'm recommending under the area of human resources to approve the resolutions creating, uh, the instructional assistant at the middle school as well as the creation of a second grade position at, at Woodfern. Approve the retirements, resignations as listed, contract changes, transfer and change in assignments, revised contracts, approve the leaves of absence, confirm the appointments of the teachers as listed, school psychologist, long-term substitutes, instructional assistants, HEA office personnel, secretary clerical assistants, clerical 10-month, secretary 10-month substitutes, mentors, buddies, coaches, and approve reappointments as well as the revised transportation driver aid hours for 2014, 2015. Approve student teachers, summer work and revise HEA summer, uh, secretary summer work salaries, approve group changes, um, to approve the staff being paid under the NCLB Title I funds, approve the .5 staff salaries to be paid as follows, and approve the revised extended school year program. Policies as listed, these are the communication policies that were just discussed. Approve the Hillsborough High School Media Center extended hours as we have done, uh, last year.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items B1 through B17 of the action agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Mr. Gillette?
Well, I, unfortunately I forgot to print it out. I don't have it in front of me, but the, um, we received, I think, backup memo about the summer, um, hourly rates or per diems.
It was B12.
Yeah, B12. Um, and there was a, I guess a, a, a different calculation, like an amended calculation. I was just curious how that was calculated.
It was, um, per diem hourly calculation versus hourly calculation?
Okay, so it's, that's a different thing. Per diem, I should know this by now.
Yeah.
Per diem hourly is different than hourly.
A day is a day regardless of whether it's taken in the summer or whether it's done during the school year.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, so, so, so what's the, what are the variables? I'm, the variable is that different school buildings have different hours?
There are hourly differences during summer work also, but the longstanding past practice in the district has been a day is a day to per diem rate change. If we wanted to make a change to hourly rate, we would need to do that through the collective bargaining agreement.
Okay. All right, all right. I'll go back and take another look at it, I'm not going to hold it up.
Okay.
Okay, and, and so specifically what we're voting is on the revised hourly rate?
Right. Revised hourly rate. Because we had an hourly rate and then we changed it. I don't know why we changed it or how it was calculated the first time compared to how it was calculated the second time. I guess that was my question.
Yeah, the, the difference was, was that there, um, we didn't, we recalculated based upon hourly, which wasn't the, the longstanding past practice. And it adjusted the actual income that our staff members would have received and had received in previous years.
Okay.
So when that was, um, when that was discovered, we remediated by going, um, by calculating it on the per diem rate rather than the hourly rate.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay. Any other? Mrs. Haas.
I have two questions. Um, one was a lack of clarity in terms of who's going to be teaching STEM at the middle school. Because on the agenda, and unfortunately my printer was dying as I printed this. There was one person who was being moved from science to STEM, but there was a full-time STEM teacher who was being moved to part-time?
Yes, there, there are some certification concerns with the person who was there part-time who was moved into the full-time position. She will be remaining as a long-term sub, um, in the part-time position. And we have a fully certificated, um, person, Pete Passy, who was our science teacher up there, also holds, um, the appropriate certifications to do the STEM full-time. We have been in contact with the county office to see if there is a waiver, um, for, uh, this person who, uh, who has done work for us in the past, and she, she's done very good work for us in the past. Uh, unfortunately, she still needs to complete, uh, additional coursework in order to be fully certificated in order to teach in that full-time position.
Okay, so how many teachers do we have in the STEM program?
2.5.
2.5.
So, yeah, it's 2.5 and we are looking for a fully certificated person for the .5 position currently.
Okay. And I guess I would like to-
And if the state is willing to waive, then, then we won't and we'll, and we'll put that particular teacher back in.
I mean, that's a huge issue.
Oh, absolutely.
And I'm sure it's not us alone. Um, that's a very hard position to recruit and what can we do about it?
Well, I, I had conversations with the certification clerk at this, at, at the county level as well as the executive county superintendent directly. The executive county superintendent is not authorized to, um, to waive under these circumstances, which is a shame that they're removing professional judgment from the executive county superintendent's office where a few years ago you could do that. The executive county could, um, waive certification of certain other requirements where there are like life skills, experience in the position and, and so on. So the judgment has been removed from our executive county superintendent's decision-making to waive certifications. It puts us, uh, in a pickle at this point. We have been searching, um, quite broadly to try to fill the, the position originally and we continue to search.
Okay. Okay. My other issue is with B16, the electronic communications, new policy. And I guess I have to laugh, because like a week ago, where we're giving out like 5,000 computers to students, and the first thing we're doing here is restricting electronic communications between kids, teachers, and support staff. Sort of doesn't make sense. And to use one of Joel and Lisa's favorite lines, "The electronic communication is the tool. It's not the behavior." And it seems to me that the behavior is what needs to be modified, and I think, well, not modified, but, you know, standardized, or whatever the right word is. And, you know, honestly, that's covered in various codes of conduct and acceptable behavior and, you know, whatever other policies there are elsewhere, that I would hate to make it appear that the electronic communication is a problem, at the same time as we're pushing electronic communication. And in addition to what Mr. Goodehue said, there are a couple of other contradictions here. Like, this does not exempt guidance counselors. I would be horrified to think that some student who called their guidance counselor at a difficult moment in their life would not be able to receive a cellular phone call back from their guidance counselor. I would be very upset if, you know, somebody who didn't look at their work email all weekend was unaware that somebody was trying to contact them on Facebook, which is where kids go to communicate with each other, and teachers, and other, you know, people, you know, counselors and whatever. And I also think this says nothing about kids who are 18 years old. Students who are 18 years old should not have the same restrictions as kids who are under 18 years old. So I think it's a flawed policy. I, you know, I'm sure that if we looked at this more deeply, and I'm glad Mr. Goodehue came up with the contradiction that's in there, but there are other, like, very, very difficult things in here that relate to behavior. It doesn't, and it should not, in my opinion, relate to the use of email, or what email account, and, you know, there are emergency situations. I think everybody has had a kid on a field trip. The teachers constantly communicate with kids via text message or group text messages, all these things that my little flip phone doesn't do, but everybody else's smartphone does. And I would not want to restrict that, especially where, you know, kids are in a different environment and need to be reached.
That's right.
And if a kid is missing, I say, use everything you've got, and don't restrict it. The horrible behavior that this seeks to control is so much less, happens less often than all of the things that this is going to inconvenience. You know, I really don't think it's going to solve the problem that it sets out to solve. I think that's going to happen regardless, unfortunately and horribly, but, you know, I would hate for us to tie people's hands in terms of reaching children in an emergency, or children reaching teachers or counselors in an emergency. So, I really think this ought to go back to the drawing boards. I understand that this is a mandated policy, and it was supposed to be approved by August 2014, but since we blew that anyway, let's just see if we could get it right. My humble opinion.
Well, I just wanted to, I just wanted to know how, or know what the response would be to this. I know my daughter did go on an overnight field trip last year, and the teacher said very reasonably to me, "Don't worry, you know, all the kids have my cell number. Here, you can, parents, you can have my cellphone number too. I have all of theirs. They get lost or something. So this, would this, these policies be in conflict with that type of what I thought was reasonable behavior, which I was happy about?" So that's a question. You don't have the answer right now.
Well, I think it is. I think the administrator can say yes. In this particular case, it's appropriate to do so. And I just want to address something.
So is this the same thing you mentioned, Mr. Goodehue, then, that the, with the principals or administrator's approval in these situations, and that that covers it?
Exactly, but I do want to address something that Mrs. Haas said. I agree 100% that this is about bad behavior, not about communication and ensuring that those type of behaviors are minimized. I actually took a look at this policy from kind of the opposite perspective, that, that in many ways, teachers would, if they were going to include some type of social media activity in an instructional setting, are hesitant to do it. Not that they wish to do it, but they're hesitant to do it because they're not sure it's okay or not, or to what extent is this okay. This does provide structure for that conversation to take place, certainly, because in the absence of that, it's really conversation that a teacher and an administrator would have. My concern is that, as I think it is your concern also, Mrs. Haas, that we don't stifle the communication for fear of this communication is, you know, is inappropriate, when it's not about how we communicate, it's about what we communicate, you know? So, you know, I'm certainly fine if we wish to pull it off and have continued conversations, or if the board wishes to vote on it tonight.
I mean, in certain aspects of the policy, it also helps standardize the means of communication. So personally, I'd prefer to have any emails that come to myself or my child coming from https.us, not from a teacher's personal email account. I don't think it's appropriate.
I think, you know, as, as...
I think, go ahead.
As we discussed in committee, certainly, as I read the policy, to me, the significant distinction was one-to-one communication versus group communication. And I think the idea of using a Facebook page for a team or a club, and having the advisor be able to use that, and the kids be able to use that as a way to group communicate, is a good usage, and it goes back to the principle of approving it. But I think, I would go back to what you're saying, Tom, in that I would be concerned about random one-to-one conversations between a teaching staff or a support staff or any staff members and an individual student that's outside the bounds of what we see and are aware of, which to me is very different from a club or a team or whatever, as a group. For example, going on a field trip, that's a group activity, and a group communication about that, to me is very different than one teacher and one particular student, and whether or not any communication there should go on outside of some set of approved communication methods.
Yeah. I mean, my question, this is an important policy, so the question that I actually had was, how's the staff going to be notified and trained on this?
We're going to have this as a policy study for leadership team, and then we'll go through the principals and the staff, probably through a faculty meeting discussion on it.
Okay. Any other? Okay, and then the, so is there any more conversation about the policy? Mrs. Haas.
I would just like to put this off for another meeting. I'd like to put it off for another meeting. I'd like to get input from the teachers as to the occasions in which social media is used now, so that we know what we're eliminating, because according to this, the minute this, the minute this policy is approved, all social media stops.
I don't, I didn't interpret it that way.
Yeah, it's in here. It's in here.
I thought it restricted one-to-one. Friending somebody on Facebook is different than communicating through a Facebook page meant for a team, or, right now, Ed Modo is very popular, I know, at Otten Road and the middle school, as a teacher sets that up, and they communicate to their whole class through, using that. That's not restricted by any means. It's the one-to-one communicate. It's actually forming personal friendships, or the ability to communicate one-to-one that's restricted, which I don't find, you know, as a professional, as a parent, I restrict that with my kids' friends. I don't let them friend me on Facebook just in case, because I can't control what other people put up on Facebook, you know, and, you know, put me in a picture, you know. If I'm not even there, they put Lorraine Swanson, and then all of a sudden, all of my kids' friends who have friended me see a picture which I'm not even in, you know. So I think it's, I think that teachers should want to protect themselves this way. I think this is appropriate.
But I think the nature of the communication is very important. If you had a teacher email a particular student and said, you know, "I really liked what you, what you wrote in this particular essay. However, you may wish to begin the paragraph with this type of sentence," I think would be viewed by the board much differently if the communication was, "How was your weekend?" You know, on a more of a friendly type of, type of basis. So, you know, getting back to Judy's comment, we don't want to restrict communication that helps us move our agenda forward as educators. So, you know, now that we're into a one-to-one environment, we can expect more online communication between staff and students. Our expectation, though, is that that communication is work-related.
And it's done through the, through the, through the...
Through the HT, the HTTPS server is, is what the work is going through. So, you know, we have, we have the ability to track, to screen, to do all of that information, to do all of that work through, through our server. Gets a little bit more dicey when a third-party software like Facebook, or, I don't know, LinkedIn, you know, the other type of social networks that, that could be used, you know. But, but I think, again, there has to be some judgment exercise, because not all one-to-one communication is, you know, is inappropriate. And we now have the ability that a teacher sitting home can, can review a student's work online in a Google Doc, make a comment directly to that student about that particular work. I don't think it's the intent of this board to limit that type of communication.
And this policy doesn't.
And this policy doesn't. I want to go back to something that Lorraine said, because I think it's the, probably the most critical piece of this discussion, which is Facebook and similar shared social media sites, while it may begin as a one-to-one communication, it, you know, exponentially expands, because that's what Facebook is. The whole point of Facebook is sharing all that, except that the teacher and the student, neither the teacher or the student has control about who the other one is friended with, and what privacy settings they have about friends, or friends of friends, or the world, or whatever else. And that's where, as a school district, we have a responsibility to protect. And to me, that's the distinction, and maybe the term "social media site" in the policy is too vague, but to me, the problem is that we, that if they're using HTTPS mail, Ed Modo, whatever, all these different things, that stuff that we know how it's set up, we administer it, and we make sure that the only people in the environment are people that it's okay. When you start talking Facebook or anything else like that, we've lost control, but we have a responsibility. And I think that's where the line is drawn.
So, real quick, just for, for people who may be watching on the camera at a later time, I'm wondering what's, what's going on. The policies are for electronic communications, one's for a teaching staff, and others for support staff between members and students. So, the first part of the section talks about what's considered inappropriate for electronic communication between those. There's other types of communication which is addressed in other policies. You know, basically guidelines on what's, essentially what's out of bounds and types of communications between district staff and students. Then there are protocols on what is an appropriate way of communicating between the student and the staff member. And it goes through there. Each, each of the sections says that there's exceptions that can be provided with approval from, from the, from the local administrator, which would be the school principal. And that's, that's essentially it. So that the protocols are within email, electronics, which says it should be done within this, within the school system, cellular telephone, which is listed that they shouldn't be contacting the student personally. Again, if he has prior approval from the principal, then it is allowed. Text messaging, social networking, and then, and then there are reporting responsibilities. So I think it's, I think it's a good policy. I think it actually helps codify and state, you know, what's inappropriate, what's, what's unexcusable, and what are good protocols to do it. So, we could take it back to committee if we want, but I'd rather see if the, if the committee votes on it. If they say no, then, then we can take a look at it. Dr. Sun.
I was just going to suggest, I mean, while I agree with everything you just said, Tom, I mean, I didn't see a problem with it. If the leadership team is using this as a study next week, they might have some interesting viewpoints, and that could be then shared with the committee. So I don't have a problem with pulling this, listening to the leadership team, collecting anything from staff members in that, in that period of time, and then bringing it back afterwards, if that's going to be clear.
That's fine. Okay. Robert rolls forward.
I'm okay with that.
What's that?
With Lorraine Swanson, comma, doctor.
Okay, so then I will entertain a motion to withdraw item B16 in its entirety, to be brought up at a, at a later period in time. So, and this is just my vote, or do we have to do a voice vote?
No, what you can do is postpone, and you have an HR vote on there. Let's get that one off without that number, and then another vote to postpone that number.
It's a table.
Okay, so we're going to first vote for items B1 through B15 and B17.
Correct. And then you get to vote it again to postpone B16.
Okay. Got it. Thank you. Last question I had on the agenda was actually on 17. The specialists for working at the media center, was that in budget?
Yes, this was what we've, we've done, I think, over the past two years now, based upon the will of the board. We spoke about extending the hours.
Okay, and then from B1, you mentioned that one of the positions was not within budget, so we would expect a recommendation from the administration for how you're going to keep that within the overall budget.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Roll call please, Mr. Mahmud.
Sure. Mrs. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms., Mr. Gillette?
Hold on a second. Yes.
B1 through 15 and B17.
Yeah.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Ms. Wassan?
Yes.
Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. I'd like to entertain a motion to postpone, postpone item B16 of the action agenda.
So moved.
Second. Roll call please.
Got you. Mrs. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Ms. Wassan?
Yes.
Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes.
Can I just say something?
Yes, Mrs. Haas.
I just realized there's somebody with my last name on the personnel agenda.
No relation.
I just want to clarify. The person is no relation.
Thank you, Mrs. Haas.
It must come up in the past.
Continuing on with the action agenda.
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions.
Before you go ahead, I just wanted to, I think on B3.3, this is why I was almost not going to vote. On B3.3, do we have a memo that B3.3 really should say four hours 20 minutes to be, to equalize with B3.4? I think that was in one of our memo backups. So I don't know if we just approved something that was not quite right, but I mean, you could just pencil it out if it's...
I'm sorry, which, which one?
B3.
B3.3?
I don't think so.
Wasn't there a memo about that?
Yes, there was.
Yeah.
Do I need to, yeah, one?
Two should be the same.
See, I have to start saying things when I first think of them, because, you know, getting to be that age, then you remember it at odd times.
So, the, the motion, Dr. Antunes, if you wouldn't mind just reading the motion, how it should read?
Okay, it should read, Walsh Maria, from instructional assistant, three hours 40 minutes per day, to instructional assistant, four hours 20 minutes per day, Otten Road Intermediate School, effective September 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2015. Student needs salary $29,602 pro-rated step one.
I'd like to entertain, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the amended item.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Laurie?
And don't, teachers don't say, "I didn't give you five minutes."
B3.3.
Times 185.
Okay. Roll call please, Mr. Mahmud.
Surely. Mrs. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Four hours.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Ms. Wassan?
Yes.
Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passes. Continuing on with the action agenda.
I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of operations, to approve line item transfers, and to approve a deposit into the capital reserve of $525,000.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items...
And, excuse me, I'm sorry, and also a motion to accept the donations of 47 stackable chairs from the township, as well as a percussion bell kit for ARRIS from Dawn Kazim, and we appreciate their donations. appreciate their donations.
So moved.
C1 through C3.
Got you.
We got it. Any discussion? Just want to confirm for C2 that that's for the 14-15 here. Thank you.
Yep.
Roll call please, Mr. Mahmud.
Surely, Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. Like to open the floor up to the public for a second opportunity for public speak. Okay, seeing none, any old business from board members. Okay, like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Wait, who moved?
Everybody moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes, we're adjourned. Thank you.